Dr. Hassel and two of his student representatives will present the awards. Congratulations are in order for the 2012-2013 Collinswood Outstanding Teacher of the Year. These teachers are to be commended for their hard work and dedication they have given and continue to give to the Collinswood Public School District. We'll do one at a time. At the elementary level, from the Tatum School, 4th grade teacher Jane Platt. Mrs. Platt is being joined by Ms. McPartland, who is her building administrator and who will say a few words.
Good evening, everyone. It's my honor to stand here beside Mrs. Platt. They say a teacher's love can impact a child's life forever. As we look back at childhood, I'm sure we can all remember that teacher, the one who made us smile, wiped our tears, provided support, and encouraged us to be our best. Mrs. Platt has been that teacher to so many of our students. Mrs. Platt began her teaching in Oakland, where she taught basic skills for one year before coming to Collinswood. She taught at Mark Newby School for four years before taking time off to raise her children, Megan, Ryan, and Sean. In 1989, she returned to teaching and began her tenure at Tatum School. Over the years, she has taught mostly 4th grade, and she has also had an opportunity to loop from 3rd to 4th grade. Mrs. Platt has expressed that her greatest reward as an educator is seeing students years later and the fond memories they have of their time in her classroom. She feels a great sense of pride and joy knowing that she has made a positive impact on the life of the child. It's hard to pinpoint the moment I recognize how truly connected Mrs. Platt is to her students, but I will look back at this year particularly with a renewed sense of what teaching is about. Mrs. Platt has harnessed every student's talents, achievements, and strengths to bring joy to her classroom. Her ability to hold students to the highest of expectations while having them recognize the gifts they can offer to life is truly remarkable. Her techniques for developing partnerships and teamwork allow students to be leaders and empower them to be successful in every aspect of life. Mrs. Platt is also extremely dedicated to her craft. Whenever we change gears to a new curriculum or program, she embraces it with such professionalism. She is the cheerleader, always offering words of wisdom for how new paths in education will improve the goals we have for students. She feels renewed by change and works tirelessly to bring excitement and creativity to what she is teaching. The students respond to this energy and, as a result, reach for the stars to achieve their goals. Mrs. Platt has truly mastered the art of teaching. Her love and devotion to students, parents, and fellow colleagues is incredibly genuine. When a student enters her classroom for a new school year, they will be presented with an opportunity to flourish, and Mrs. Platt will ensure that they do. Each one of them will be truly fortunate to be part of a community of learners who depend on one another to be successful. And as they walk out of her classroom for the final time in June, so many will look back and remember that she is that teacher. She was the one that made all the difference.
I'd like to thank Dr. Oswald and the Board of Education. I'd like to thank, so many people, all the administration. I'd like to thank my family for coming tonight. I'd like to thank my students and their parents. I'd like to thank my family at Tatum School, who mean so much to me. Working with them on a daily basis makes my life so lazy. All the teachers and Mrs. Tagline or Glow, that keeps everything together, Mrs. McPartland, that works tirelessly to keep our school a great place to be, they make me look good. So, this is their award, too. I'd like to thank the parents so much for sending me wonderful emails and letters of appreciation all the time. This means so much to a teacher. Over the last 30 years of teaching, I've said to my family that the true awards for me came from my students and came from those parents. The smiles, the hugs, the pictures, the little gifts, especially the little yellow rubber ducks that I've added to my collection over the year because the child many years ago started this for me. In fact, I got three new additions this morning, and it was very exciting. I didn't have those yet. The letters at the end of the year from parents that say, "You made such a difference in my child's life," and all of these are truly the rewards to me. However, getting Teacher of the Year, that's icing on the cake. So, I'm thrilled and honored and eternally grateful. Thank you.
From the Collinswood Middle School, the Teacher of the Year is Ms. Kate Kennedy. And Ms. Kennedy will be joined by Dr. McMullin, who will say a few words about her.
It is my honor and privilege to speak on behalf of Collinswood Middle School Teacher of the Year, Ms. Kate Kennedy. Ms. Kennedy teaches 8th grade and has the ability to teach 8th grade math and has the ability to creatively inspire her students to see the importance of math in their lives. She motivates them with her enthusiasm, she nurtures them with her care and concern, and she holds them accountable for their efforts. Ms. Kennedy's can-do attitude and positive outlook encourage the most reluctant and math-phobic students to get involved and try their best. In addition to her excellence in the classroom, Ms. Kennedy is one of the driving forces behind CMS's very successful character education program, Positive Partners, and she is the embodiment of the aspects of that program. At the request of a group of students, Ms. Kennedy formed the CMS Panther Pulse, an after-school dance team, sharing her expertise and passion for dance and working with a wide variety of students for whom the dance team was the first and only school activity in which they ever participated, connecting these students to the school and building valuable relationships with them. Author Greg Henry Quinn states, "Few have more opportunities to be heroes than do teachers." In the case of Ms. Kennedy, one opportunity knocks, she throws open the door, and welcomes the chance to make a positive and lasting impact on the lives of the students of CMS. Ms. Kennedy, thank you for all you do, and thank you for the heroic fashion in which you do it. Congratulations on your well-deserved selection as the Collinswood Middle School Teacher of the Year.
I didn't know I was going to have to talk. I like the stuff that that teacher said. There's always just children out there in the auditorium. I'm okay with that. But, thank you, Dr. Jack. That was beautiful. I feel really privileged to have come to Collinswood. I was in Gloucester Township for three years, big reps came, and I was panicked, but I couldn't have ended up in a better place. So, thank you, everyone up here, too. All the kids I got. Yeah, thanks.
Collinswood Outstanding Teacher of the Year from Collinswood High School is math teacher Mr. Miles Holland. Mr. Holland will be joined by high school principal, Mr. Hill.
Good evening, everyone. My pleasure is to introduce Miles Holland as the High School Teacher of the Year. Miles studied mathematics at the University of Plymouth in England and came to our country in 1999. He worked as a math teacher in Cherry Hill for four years before settling in Collinswood, both as a teacher and a resident. For the past eight years, he's taught at Collinswood High School and says that he loves giving of himself to his students, loves to laugh in class, and loves when the students have fun while they are learning. Miles currently teaches probability and stats, Algebra I, and supervises in our math lab. It's obvious to me that he enjoys sharing his passion for his subject area with his students. Outside of the classroom, Miles has served him as advisor for his Steppers Club, which is a dance ensemble at the high school. He claims that he dances with them, and he performed at halftime of the 76ers game?
It's true.
It's true. Four years ago, Miles took over the high school girls' tennis racket. He's done a tremendous job turning it around. He's had four incredible seasons, winning record each year, and participated in the state tournament. Two years ago, the Curry Post honored him as Tennis Coach of the Year. Miles and his fiancee Nicole live in Collinswood with their two children. Children attend Tatum School. Ladies and gentlemen, Miles Holland.
I'll be very brief. Thank you so much for this award. Thank you to the Board of Education. Thank you to the superintendent, Dr. Oswald. Thank you very much, Mr. Hill. That was very nice of you. Thank you so much to all the students, all the parents. It's an absolute honor and absolute privilege to share this with you. I do live here in Collinswood. I love this town. I love the people that go to school here, I love the people that live here, and it's just a beautiful place, and to be part of that is a beautiful thing. Especially want to thank my fiancee Nicole, my daughter Annalise, and my son Baker. They mean the world to me, and it's because of them that every day I want to get up and I want to go to school, and I just enjoy myself immensely with my students. It's a beautiful job, and I'm so privileged. Thank you so much for letting me share this with you.
Okay, what we learned there is it doesn't really matter what Mr. Holland says, it just sounds cool-fitting. And then finally, each year, the Collinswood School District recognizes one special area teacher who doesn't necessarily fit into one of our more traditional elementary, middle school, or high school categories. And this year, our special area teacher is our academic support, one of our academic support teachers, Ms. Patricia O'Connor. Mrs. O'Connor will be introduced by Mrs. Bazanz.
It's my pleasure to introduce Collinswood's Special Area Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Patty O'Connor. Mrs. O'Connor made me promise that I would keep my introduction short because she's very uncomfortable getting a lot of attention. However, she does deserve a little time in the spotlight tonight, and I want to be sure that everyone knows how special Mrs. O'Connor really is. Mrs. O'Connor has been a teacher here in Collinswood for 30 years. She started her career as a kindergarten teacher at Newby and Sharp Schools. That was when we had half-day kindergarten. Later, she took on 1st grade and then became a reading recovery and academic support teacher, which is the position she currently holds. Through all of these assignments, Mrs. O'Connor has shown a love for teaching and working with children that has never wavered. As an academic support teacher, Mrs. O'Connor travels around her day to various grade-level classrooms to support students in reading and math. She is able to quickly diagnose students' strengths and needs and to develop a plan to improve their academic achievement. But just as importantly, she makes them believe that with hard work, they can grow and be better students. Students in all of her classrooms seek out special moments for individual attention from Mrs. O'Connor and share with her something new they've learned. It is obvious when you see her teach that she is developing in her students a sense of confidence and joy for learning that will last a lifetime. Mrs. O'Connor's energy and commitment to her students and her schools is why she deserves the respect of so many. She has always been willing to accept new challenges and push herself to meet the needs of each and every one of her students, and she does this with a smile and a positive outlook. She has made an impact on her students and her peers. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank her for all she does. She is an excellent choice for Teacher of the Year.
Thank you, Mrs. Bazanz. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank the Board of Education and the student members. It's nice to see so many kids I've taught up there. I also like to thank the administrators and my colleagues for giving me this prestigious honor. I can look out in that audience and I see so many kids from so many schools that I know I've touched their lives. I've been lucky enough to be at all elementary schools through my 30 years. So, it's a privilege to get this honor, and I thank you all so much. I love working here, and 30 more years to go. Thank you.
Okay, those are our four Collinswood School District Outstanding Teachers of the Year. One last time, elementary school, Mrs. Jane Platt; middle school, Ms. Kate Kennedy; high school, Mr. Miles Holland; and special area teacher of the year, Mrs. Patty O'Connor. Thank you. Second item on the agenda tonight is the Collinswood Junior Women's Club Spelling Bee. The superintendent and members of the Collinswood Board of Education wish to congratulate and present certificates to the following students for their outstanding performance in the Collinswood Junior Women's Spelling Bee. I'm going to call several names here. I would ask the students to come up front for your certificates and remain up front, and the audience and parents to hold your applause till the end. Collinswood Junior Women's Club Spelling Bee. Susannah Cook, Garfield, Grade 5, 1st place. Zane Desai, Garfield, Grade 4, 1st place. Dion Chen, Newby, Grade 4, 1st place. Catherine Abicand, Newby, Grade 5. 2nd place. Isabella Mangan, Sharp, Grade 5, 4th place. Owen Fopel, Tatum, Grade 5 representative. And Hannah Stecker, Tatum, Grade 5 representative. The Collinswood Junior Women's Club Spelling Bee champions. Our next round of awards. Section 3, Item 3, the Schoolwide Spelling Bee. The superintendent and members of the Collinswood Board of Education wish to congratulate and present certificates to the following students for winning their school's spelling bee competitions. Some of the same names. Susannah Cook, Garfield, Grade 5, 1st place. Zane Desai, Garfield, Grade 4, 2nd place. Aaron Sollenberger, Garfield, Grade 4, runner-up. Isabella Mangan, Sharp, Grade 5, 1st place. Hannah Stecker, Tatum, Grade 5, 1st place. And Jonathan Hewitt, Zane, Grade 4, 1st place. Schoolwide Spelling Bee. For our students, when you come down to the front, get your certificate and then face front because you have to put up with your parents taking pictures of you. It's part of the deal. Next, we have our schoolwide geography bees for our schools that participate in the geography bee. Superintendent and members of the Board of Education wish to congratulate and present certificates to the following students for winning their school's geography bee competition. Ethan Gatone, Garfield, Grade 5, 1st place. Victor Xu, Sharp, Grade 5, 1st place. Owen Fopel, Tatum, Grade 5, 1st place. And Noah McAllister, Zane, Grade 5, 1st place. Schoolwide Geography Bee. Thank you. Item number 5 on the agenda, the Tatum Shields Post 17 American Legion Award. Superintendent and members of the Collinswood Board of Education wish to congratulate and present certificates to the following 5th grade students for displaying qualities of leadership and Americanism. Alexandra Fernandez, Garfield. Marissa Waters, Garfield. Edward Bernardo, Newby. Caroline Clark, Newby. Kevin Cavalier, Sharp. Isabella Mangan, Sharp. Nolan Dick, Tatum. Morgan Pillar, Tatum. Claudia Celia, Zane North. And Pocket Pizzatullo, Zane North. Tatum Shields Post 17. Tatum Shields Post 17 American Legion. Thank you. Item 6, the Collinswood Rotary Service Award. The superintendent and members of the Collinswood Board of Education wish to congratulate and present certificates to the following 5th grade students for demonstrating outstanding service to others. From Garfield School, Von Polstock. From Mark Newby School, Chloe Purdy. From Sharp School, Lourdes Gonzalez. From Tatum, Allison Shafula. And from Zane North, Elizabeth Rautzen. Collinswood Rotary Service. Item 7 on the student portion of the agenda tonight, the Collinswood Fire Prevention Award. The superintendent and members of the Collinswood Board of Education wish to congratulate and present certificate of achievement to the following students for winning the Collinswood Fire Prevention Contest. From Newby School, 4th grade, 1st place, Christina Go. From Newby School, 5th grade, 1st place, Amber Zellum. And from Zane North, Grade 4, 1st place, Avery Carino. The Collinswood Fire Prevention. Number 8, the Student Hero Award. Superintendent and members of the Collinswood Board of Education wish to congratulate and present a certificate to the following students for their outstanding act of courage under dangerous circumstances in helping to report a house fire. From Sharp School, Grade 5, Matthew Havens. And from Tatum School, Grade 5, Holden Corrie Fisher. The next awards will be presented by Mrs. Henry and her student representative, Ms. Henry. The superintendent and members of the Collinswood Board of Education wish to congratulate and present a certificate to Zane North student Flora Lutz-Valez, Grade 1, for her artwork submission Penguins in a Snow Globe in the New Jersey State PTA Reflections Contest. PTA Reflections. The next award, the superintendent and members of the Collinswood Board of Education wish to congratulate and present a certificate to the Mark Newby Green Team K-5 students for their dedication and efforts to clean up Cooper River and their involvement in the New Jersey Adopt a Bat Program. Accepting the award on behalf of the Green Team is Patrick Pope. The superintendent and members of the Collinswood Board of Education wish to congratulate and present a certificate to the Zane North team that presented Pet Project at the Odyssey of the Mind competition and won 1st place as Division 1 state champions. Accepting on behalf of the group is Avery Carino. The group consists of Elizabeth Allendorfer, Claudia Celia, Lila Damasi, Nick Immer, Ellie Rautzen, and Amanda Jaeger. The Odyssey of the Mind team. The superintendent and members of the Collinswood Board of Education wish to congratulate and present certificates to the following students for having their work published this year. From Garfield, Grade 4, Alexa McClintick with a work entitled My County Poster Contest. Garfield, Grade 4, in the My County Poster Contest, 3rd place is DeAndre Williams. Newby, Grade 3, Horseshoe Crab Art Ecological Research and Development Group Art Book, Sonia Lombardo. Sharp, Grade 4, Young American Poetry Digest, Poem and Title Quidditch, Tyler Kalecki. Sharp, Grade Four, Young American Poetry Digest, poem entitled Quidditch, Tyler Kalecki. Sharp, Grade Four, Young American Poetry Digest, poem entitled Quidditch, Aiden Caporvica. Thank you to our students. Item Thirteen, the Technology Leadership Award. The superintendent and Collinswood Board of Education wish to congratulate and present certificates to the following students from Garfield School for sharing their outstanding technology skills with the entire Garfield family. Grade Five, Von Polstok, and Grade Five, Sincere Shine. The Philadelphia International Music Festival. The superintendent and members of the Collinswood Board of Education wish to congratulate and present a certificate to middle school violin student Kate Schell, Grade Six, for being awarded the Alice Downs Scholarship, a two-week music camp at the Philadelphia Item Fifteen, the Olympic Conference Honors Band. The superintendent and members of the Collinswood Board of Education wish to congratulate and present certificates to the following students for their selection to the Olympic Conference Honors Band. From the high school, Grade Twelve on clarinet, Joseph Freeling. From the high school, Grade Ten on French horn, Rachel Freeling. High school, Grade Eleven on clarinet, Philip Tru. And from the middle school, Grade Seven on the oboe, Sophia Olers, Olympic Conference Item Sixteen, the College of New Jersey K-12 Art Exhibition. The superintendent and members of the Collinswood Board of Education wish to congratulate and present a certificate to Olivia Monco, Grade Twelve, for having her colored pencil artwork Tribute to West displayed at the College of New Jersey's Art Innovation and Idea New Jersey K-12 Art exhibit. Three more awards. One is for all-state choir. The superintendent and members of the Collinswood Board of Education wish to congratulate and present a certificate to Julia Nygro, Grade Eleven, for being selected to the all-state choir. The New Jersey Governor's Cyber Challenge. The superintendent and members of the Collinswood Board of Education wish to congratulate and present a certificate to Quinn Heath, Grade Eleven, for placing third out of over 1,000 competitors in the New Jersey Governor's Cyber Challenge, a statewide technology and And our final award this evening, the New Jersey Art Educators Award. The superintendent and members of the Collinswood Board of Education wish to congratulate and present a certificate to Lisa Winkler, high school art teacher, for being selected by the Executive Board of the Art Educators of New Jersey as the recipient of the High School Division Art Award. I believe that all of our district Teachers of the Year and Mrs. Winkler would agree that they wouldn't have a shot at being such great teachers without such great students, and many of those great students were recognized this evening, so one last round of applause for our students.